Okay, we're ready.
Good evening, February 21st. I will ask Lexi to come up and read us through the pledge, an inspirational reading, and a moment of silence, please.
I am the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
The Punxsutawney Phil lied to us about the six more weeks of winter. It's pretty hot outside. So fittingly, this is also marks, this week also marks the beginning of spring sports. And I'm also thinking we're going to be starting to see flowers outside because it's supposed to be 8:00 on Thursday. So I have a quote today from Sitting Bull. Behold, my friends, the spring is coming. The earth has gladly received the embraces of the sun and we shall soon see the results of love. Thank you.
Thank you, Lexi. And I want to thank April Firth, who is our new board clerk. And I will ask Ms. Firth, do we have any additions and or modifications to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. And for recognitions, I will call Ms. Purdy up, who's going to walk us through all of them.
Chair Helsel, members of the board, community members, thank you for joining us today. We have three special events that we would like to recognize. But before we do that, I also wanted to comment that we have a lot of great athletics going on recently that we will be recognizing in March. And especially, we have the girls' regional basketball team playing tonight. And one of the teachers that we're going to be recognizing is coaching. So she, Ms. Yarborough, won't be here for that. But without further ado, I would like to start by introducing our February Student of the Month. The February Student of the Month is a young woman who excels in music and academics. During her time here at Pecosa High School, she has challenged herself with a number of advanced-level courses, and her academic efforts have earned her a place in the National Honor Society, the German Honor Society, and the Tri-M Music Honor Society. She is also active in the student-to-student organization. And outside of the classroom, she is a proud member of the Pecosan Islander Marching Band, which she led this past season as one of the three drum majors. She has also received the band's Leadership Award. When she is not working on schoolwork or band practice, this young woman can typically be found volunteering right here at the Pecosan Public Library, where she is a teen advisory board member. She's also very active in her church, where she has led the children's ministry for the past five years. And last year, she volunteered her time at the primary school as a special friend. Probably one of the most unique facts about this young woman, however, is that she has a passion for writing and has already authored not one but two published works. In 2021, she was named a Muse Writing Center Teen Fellow. And this fall, she will attend Christopher Newport University, where she plans to follow her passion by studying English and secondary education. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Evelyn Weimert, your February Student of the Month. And I can attest, her writing is amazing. It's really, really fantastic. Okay, next, we would like to recognize our Pecosan High School Virginia All-State Chorus members. Earlier this month, 23 of our Pecosan High School singers attended the District Chorus Eight event at War Hill High School. During this time, all-state chorus additions were held. And with much thanks to the leadership of their teacher, Rebecca Wade, and the natural talent present, PHS had four young people recognized with all-state placements. And those were Senior Avery Nunnely Brooks, who was a first alternate for Tenors Two, Senior Lauren Romanelli, second alternate for Altos One, Junior Abigail Smith, second-place delegate for Sopranos Two, and Sophomore Zana Weems, first-place delegate for Altos One. Congratulations, young ladies, on this amazing accomplishment. It is very well deserved. And I don't think they were able to join us this evening, so we'll be sure to give them their certificates. If you haven't heard yet about the amazing collaboration between Biology Two and Intro to Culinary Arts, take a moment and familiarize yourself by scanning either of these barcodes to learn more about the Giving Garden. And if you wanted to take your phones out, feel free to right now. We have a WHRO article as well as the Giving Garden website. Throughout each semester, Mrs. Yarborough's Biology Two, which is also often called Botany, class researches, grows, and troubleshoots everything about the garden, from soil to seedlings to pest control. Students hold complete responsibility for their plants during the entire process. Once harvested, the plants are given to Mrs. Duval's Intro to Culinary class, who researches information about the plant as a food and identifies a recipe to try. Then they actually cook it and taste test right there in the classroom. Plants not cooked are donated to the local community so that there is zero waste. It's interesting to note that the start of this program is even Pecosan-led, as the garden boxes themselves are homegrown by Patrick Nelson for his Eagle Scout project. We are so proud of our students and teachers for their dedication of this worthwhile project, and we can't wait to see how it continues to grow. We'd like to take a moment now to show you a segment created by WHRO, which can highlight this collaborative project for the entire peninsula.
Pecosan High School is so awesome, big enough for our community. It's good for our small town. We truly care and the community disinvests so much into the school. With the kids, it makes our job easier to teach the kids because they're driven to learn and be better. The Giving Garden came when Ms. Duval and I were talking about starting something that we could do together, planting plants, growing them, and then to give them back to the community.
So actually, both the garden for my Eagle Scout project. Every scout has to plan and execute a project that they're own choosing. So I started about February 2021, and that was just an idea forming in my head at the beginning. And then I talked to the school, and they set me up with a teacher that was also working on the project. Took about five weekends, with about 20 scouts that helped out. So it was a pretty big undertaking. I like where it's going right now. It's being used by the botany class, where they grow cycle plants. And then any produce that they harvest is going to the nutrition home class to be used for cooking.
We get word from Ms. Yarborough and her students, what product will be ready to come out of the garden next. And so from that, I then tell my introduction to culinary arts students. And then within their group, which is composed of three to five students, they will know what the product is, and then they find a recipe that they're comfortable making, that they should be able to get done with within the 50-minute timeframe. And they go into the kitchen and they make it. So it's the ownership of the students so that they really buy into the product.
I like how we go out there every day and take care of the plants. And then we can see the progress from the beginning of the plant to now that they're finished.
I really love getting the product, and even finding a recipe and making the product from scratch. And even tasting it, it's definitely my favorite part. And then I love how what we don't use goes to someone in the environment who needs the product. So if we don't use something from it, then we don't give it to them. Who will use it?
The joy that you see in their face stays with you for a long time and makes you, as a teacher, realize that you're doing something that isn't helpful. Whether they never make that case again, that they felt the pride in doing it themselves and taking it from there.
Mrs. Yarborough, as I said, has a regional basketball game tonight that she's coaching. But we'd like to recognize Mrs. Duval and Lillian Lithicom to please come forward and be recognized for their hard work for this program. And Patrick Nelson can also join for his hard work in getting it all started with the garden beds. You can take this back to your classes.
Love it, awesome, awesome, awesome. Thank you.
I want to be invited. I would like to come.
That concludes my acknowledgements for this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. And we understand if you were here to get your fair recognition, if you want to speed out, we completely understand. We're going to move on to presentations and reports. Our first one is an instructional update with Amber Brown, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction.
All right, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of our school board, and our Pecosan families and community. Today, we have a couple of instructional updates that we'll be sharing with you. And we're going to start it off with our teaching, learning, and instruction portion. So first will be our textbook updates. The last time we met, we discussed the adoption, and it was voted upon for our health textbook. Just to let you know where we are going with that. We have ordered two full class sets, and we also have online student and teacher subscriptions that will be, that have been purchased for seven years, so we know we will have that. The supplemental materials that we discussed before were reviewed, and they were not purchased. So that you all have that information. So we have upcoming SOL writing. We have at Pecosan Middle School, we've got March 8th coming up, and that's going to be the long writing essay. That essay typically takes about two hours for some of our young people, sometimes a little bit longer. On that day, our students will not be attending school if they are not taking that test. We tried to look for an option where it was an early release day. We'd like to thank Ms. Bunting for being creative with her scheduling. Students who are in sixth grade and seventh grade will be home, but our eighth-grade students will be taking their writing SOL. March 17th is the multiple choice. Everybody will be there that day. For Pecosan High School, we have March 8th. That's our multiple-choice writing. And March 9th, the following day, is our long paper essay. Remember, for our students at the high school level, those are our 11th-grade students who are taking the end of writing. Students who are not taking writing SOL that day will have asynchronous learning. One thing we want to discuss today, a large portion of our presentation is going to be on literacy. So just to keep you updated with where we're at in literacy for Virginia. According to the national and state average for our NAEP assessments, and that's the national assessment of educational progress, since 2019, we hit a pretty good high. For the national average, we were looking at 219 is the kind of range for our test. It was the average test score. We looked at Virginia and having 224. Unfortunately, what we realized from the pandemic is there's a great deal of learning loss. And so one of our strategic goals deals on recovery of learning and instruction. And it speaks directly to this. Virginia Department of Education, out of reviewing the data, reviewing our NAEP scores, looking at progress overall, also determined that this was a crisis that needed to be reviewed. In 1998, when we first started looking at instruction and our literacy rates, the nation was at 213 for our average score. Virginia, a little above that at 217. As you notice throughout the years, and we'll go through some more data, it starts to rise. In 2019, we're at the 224, but as you notice in '22, there is a dramatic decline for the nation, but especially for Virginia. Looking at the averages, you can see more of the immediate need here. In 1998, our below basic was 71%, and only 30% of our students were reading on grade average or better. 2019 in Virginia, 62%. 39% were reading proficient and advanced. And if you look at the data in 2022, we have 68% of our Virginia students that are grades K through 3, who are not our third-grade testers, who are not meeting the proficiency level. So what does this mean? It means pretty much students who are reading or not reading on grade level by the end of their third grade are four times more likely to drop out of school. It also means that three out of four students, grades K through 2, are at medium to high risk of not reading on grade level, ever. It also means that 1 in 3 kindergarten to second-grade students are reading below benchmark. One out of three of our kiddos. So VDOE decided that this is obviously something we need to address as a state, but all of our communities. So we created the Virginia Literacy Act. And as you know, that is a bill that has come to pass. And basically, it's to ensure all of our students, K through 3, will receive evidence-based literacy instruction and intervention to improve outcomes. It means our focus is on early student literacy, that we have that evidence-based instruction, and that there's a science-based reading research. And you'll hear more about the science of reading and where we are training our instructors now. By the start of 2024-25, this will all go into effect, and every student, K through 3, will be receiving that literacy and the evidence-based literacy instruction. Schools have to make sure that all curriculums that are being taught have been approved by VDOE. The Virginia Department of Education is compiling a groups. We are actually in the second stage now of review for curriculum. And once an approved list goes out, that'll be approximately, we're thinking, the beginning of April, then schools will then look to that list of curriculum. Other schools have also been given the opportunity to submit their curriculum, if there's a curriculum in place. And it must be reviewed by VDOE and either approved or denied. Those with approved curriculums can continue using their curriculums. Those who do not have to select a different option. In a nutshell, what does this mean to our families, our teachers, our students? For our students, they'll be receiving core instruction and evidence-based literacy and student reading plans. Any student who is not performing on and meeting their benchmark in grade 3 will be, have an individualized plan that is created for them. The good thing for parents is that this is something our parents can participate in. They work with counselors, the teachers, and the students as well to identify what needs are there based upon data, and they create a shared goal for getting our students where they need to be. For families, there's free online evidence-based literacy resources. And again, they may assist in developing those plans. For our teachers, all teachers will be using evidence-based literacy curriculum for the entire literacy block. There will be approved literacy screening assessments that will be given multiple times throughout the year, K through 3. Student-level data must drive all of our instruction and remediation. And of course, professional development, which we have already started, will be continuing. Our goal is to ensure that our teachers have everything that they need so that they are able to instruct our students and meet them at their needs. For reading specialists, they will be coordinating all of the interventions, assisting with developing these reading plans that we have, and monitoring them. Our school divisions will be accepting the division-wide and creating our literacy plan, making sure we have our K through 3 evidence-based literacy curriculum. Our reading specialist ratio for grades K through 3 will be a 1 to 550 student ratio. Professional development must be implemented. And of course, working collaboratively with our regional literacy coaches. The last is for our educator preparation programs. There has been a big change there as well. For any programs that are working with producing our teachers coming aboard, they too have to have an evidence-based literacy instruction and courses. And our upcoming teachers will have to be assessed in that as well. All right, so let's talk about some resources that are out there for our parents and our communities to utilize at home. These resources are not directly tied to Pecosan City Public Schools, but they are ones that we recommend. They have been in our community, and our public library works with them as well. The first one is through Dolly Parton. Dolly Parton has her Imagination Library. It's with a host of books for students, and she has a passion for literacy in younger ages as well. For our families that want to register for this, what happens is there is a book program for students aged 12 through 5. And if you register for it online, you actually get about a book a month. There's 12 books that come to you each year. They're on the grade level that you need, but it helps to develop your own children's library that meets their needs too. You have our online registration. They work in coordination with the DeGud Foundation. We are currently set to be registered for this, having reached out to our public libraries as well. And families, by the end of February, will be able to take advantage of this opportunity. Also, through VDOE, there is Engage Virginia. Engage Virginia is an opportunity for our students to have an academic recovery and coaching program to help them recover from the learning loss from the pandemic. This is actually something that has been spearheaded through VDOE, and they have put it out to families to have a little bit of remediation from home. Not only do you have your learning in school, but when you go home, you have extra resources. So some of the things that are most noted or notable for this is that it helps students stay on tracks. It works with some of our soft skills, organizational skills, a lot of those executive functioning. They're coaching. Their coaching portions that are in there, educational resources to help strengthen reading skills and math skills. And it's somewhat of an online tutorial program. The last tutorial program that we'll talk about, again, more resources for your children, is Brainfuse. When you go onto Brainfuse and log on to the website, you're going to see libraries. This gives patrons of all ages an online homework session where you can have an instructor once logged on that will work with you and help provide some of that coaching and tutoring. They help with homework, with writing lab assistance, test prep. They have video lessons and they have study tools as well. So definitely some great resources that we hope that our families will check out. Moving on from literacy, February is our CTE month. So we definitely want to thank all of our instructors out there that work with our career and technical education programs. One thing going in line, we have our academic and our career plans. We start from the elementary school, working with our students on providing skills for possible careers. Once students get into sixth grade, we take a little bit of a deeper dive. And sixth grade students begin to log on to a program to develop their academic and their career plan. This is a plan that follows them until they graduate. So that every year they are touching base with their counselors and their teachers, making sure that it's a conversation and not just a document. One of the programs that we have purchased after reviewing with our middle school counselors and our high school counselors and other administrators as well, is Major Clarity. Major Clarity is a fantastic platform that unifies counseling, teaching, and CTE. And it prepares students for successful post-secondary transitions. Some of the highlights of it would be the career exploration and activities. They have diagnostic tools. Students can log in, take an assessment, kind of like a career interest inventory. And once they do that, then more resources and tools are provided to them. There are video interviews with experts in the field of interest that they identify. And what's fantastic for our Pocohesha City Public Schools employees, especially our counselors, is it talks to Power School, which is our SIS system. So when we start logging things in there for Major Clarity, it's automatically going to hop over. So all of the information is shared and everyone has access to the same thing. So we're very excited. We're hoping to have all of that in and training provided probably towards April and May. We're in the process right now of onboarding. And once our counselors have that, they're going to start right at the beginning of the year as soon as students come back. And so this is going to be our goal coming up for next year. Social emotional learning and wellbeing is a hot topic right now. It has been for a few years, especially post-pandemic. We know that our students are struggling with trauma, struggling with things within their home, our community that we don't necessarily know about. However, we receive those students every day. You've already heard from earlier this year about VTSS. I'm going to give a quick overview. VTSS is important because it's a group of administrators and staff members, teachers. We have counselors that are there, outside resources and coaches that come together to discuss academics, attendance, behavior, and other ways to support social emotional learning. Basically, VTSS is a decision-making framework. Everyone comes together to make the decisions that are in the best interest of our students. So you know of tiered instruction and intervention, where we have those tiers. We have about 80% of students are receiving those tier one in green, the common practices in your classroom, right? Good instruction where you have, having your climate, that is, there, having those relationships with students, greeting them as they come in. Then you go to your tier two strategies. Your tier two strategies are going to be about that 15% of students who need them. This is where we need to kind of decide, could this be group counseling, small group counseling, or working in different small groups and targeting some skills that are shared among all of them. And then we have our tier three, remember, academics, behavior, and attendance are what we're focusing on. And that's about 5%. Some people feel that 5% could be special education in Pocohesha. What we really believe is that there are some more individual and targeted practices that we can be doing with students, such as remediation, one-on-one, digging down to the skill. And we like to make sure we have those intensive interventions first. So as you see, tier one, it's that school classroom-wide system for all students. Everyone receives tier one instruction. Tier two is going to be a little bit more specialized, right? It's a secondary prevention. And it's going to be some of our students at 15%. And then of course, we have our tier three with our five. So what would a tier three behavioral intervention look like? Well, it would be a possible functional behavioral assessment. Many people associate that solely with special education. However, functional behavioral assessments can be done for any student. You assess where the child is, you assess their needs, conduct a needs assessment. And then you create a behavioral intervention plan that is geared toward their needs specifically. And you have a team of people around ensuring that the plan is followed and that supports are provided. Also, we have access within our group. And that's many agencies throughout our community come together about once a month. When they get together, we discuss the needs of students who maybe have some of those higher needs. And then on that committee, we have outside agencies. We have internal agencies here through our student support services. Again. Oh, that's never good. We're just going to go through these. And of course, access again for our parents and guardians that can come along there. More information as far as the mental health needs that they have. So this concludes my presentation tonight for instructional updates. However, I seem available for any questions you all may have.
I have a few questions. So as far as the deficiency that we're experiencing with the reading and stuff, will the bilingual program, will that impact this? Do you see this as a hindrance or helping? What do you see at this?
So as a former language teacher, dual enrollment or dual enrollment, dual immersion programs are incredible. They give students the opportunity to acquire that second language. But the matter or the way in which they acquire it is hand in hand with English. They're learning two languages at the same time. It actually supports. I can tell you that the research that's out there says that the sooner a student learns a second language, the sooner that acquisition occurs, the sooner they gather it. And they can go farther with their knowledge and actually accesses parts of your brain that you can't in other ways. And it really digs down deep. We've asked that same question and we actually presented that to the primary school, talking to some of the teachers. The results that they have in the data show that the students who are in both of the programs are outperforming their peers in almost every situation on reading assessments and whatever the state assessments that are there with each state.
All right, then another question. So the major clarity, the online program. So will the student get the answer or the question addressed quicker with this program from the guidance counselor? What, how is that going to change?
So it's not necessarily that a question gets answered more quickly. It's a basis of we provide so many more resources based upon what their career path may be. And it allows more people to come to the table and be on the same page. So if I'm interested in the medical field, it'll show different courses and things that might be of interest to me that I can look at in high school. Parents can go on and they can log. You have the videos that are from different people within that profession that you can listen to. It takes your track along the way, but sometimes if you're great in math, you may not think of some of the other careers that are out there because you just hear the same ones over and over. So it's more of an interactive platform. And when we have these conversations, it's a way to document it and then to push it up into Power School.
And then the last question, so VTSS. You mentioned an outside agency. So if a parent requests like a preacher or priest or something like that, are they authorized to assist, you know, with the remediation or the issue?
You know, I would say that if the preacher had a degree in a content area and did not mix the two, but was certified to teach and provide assistance and guidance, we wouldn't turn anyone away who was going to adhere by our standards and by our policies and regulations. But if they are certified in the area, that's what we're looking for.
Like behavioral issues, stuff like that?
So if there is some behavioral, we're looking for people that have. We encourage our community members to go out and there's always external things within the community. But if they're working with our students, we really want to have that behavioral background, like a psychologist, a psychiatrist, or some of the people that come to the meetings are actually from some of the clinics. We work with William &amp; Mary and they have their program for interns and counseling and those things. So other than that, but they're supervised by that clinician that is there. It's more of the medical group that's getting together with certifications. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I think I have one. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Are the teachers prepared for all of this? Do we have enough teachers? I know it's a national teacher shortage. Are they prepared for what I just saw on that screen? It looked, you know, overwhelming.
Right? So I can tell you right now, in our profession, many things are overwhelming because there are mandates. But what is more overwhelming is having a student sitting in your class who can't read. And it's very frustrating seeing the frustration on their face because you're trying to reach out.
I think that's what I'm asking though. Do we have enough reading specialists? Or can any reading teacher or an English teacher do this?
So here's the thing, a reading specialist actually has a specific certification that they have to get above and beyond. We do have reading specialists that are in our division right now. And of course, that's always something that we're looking for. This teaching for VLA, that's going to be through our regular teacher. So any teacher who is a teacher of reading is going to be the one using that literacy curriculum that is approved, that is science of reading and evidence-based. Our reading specialists that come in are going to actually provide more of that tier two intervention to sit down. They're also going to act as a coach. So they have a lot of that background knowledge and those strategies. So they're there to not only support students in smaller groupings, but also support the teachers as well. Absolutely.
Do they think, sorry, do they think some of these kids that now are going to school again will be caught up, so we're only missing the ones who were pretty much not in school during the pandemic? Like the earlier kids coming in will probably get the education that other ones missed out on during COVID. So do they think we need to focus on the certain age group that hit the pandemic-wise? To try to focus in on those two years or three years of lost education?
That's a great question. I know that right now, I think the pandemic honestly was just an eye-opener for us. If you look at our rates from 98, even if you look at the rates from 2019, we still had over 30% or over 68% of students who were not reading on grade level. The pandemic just took the Band-Aid off so that we actually saw what the issue was that we're facing. And I think this is a long time coming. And so it's very hopeful that we have all of the support from VDOE and from our governor to kind of push through and get the resources we need.
Do you think the use of electronics is decreasing the amount of reading that kids are actually doing? Trying to read through, or do you think they're using the screen and reading perfectly fine on a screen, just like they would in a book?
I think it's a matter of preference. Our students are growing up these days, and again, this is Amber Brown talking. But our students are growing up today and you cannot connect with them and you can't get their attention without the technology. Technology is the tool that we're getting given to get them to access the information. But to just hand them a book these days, it's not like us. I love the feel of a good book and I'm the only one in my family that does. So I think it's actually probably better because they're able to access any book they want. My son last night just went online to the library online and he reserved all of his books that he wants to read next week. So it's a way to get them the information now. The goal is for our teachers and our information technology resource teachers, for them to all come together and show us how to use these tools effectively so we can reach out to our students. And we're going to do it.
A lot of them using audiobooks or scrolling and then getting sidetracked and going and doing other things and then going back. It's just, I don't know, they're just losing that focus of, okay, let me read and comprehend. It's more, let me listen and comprehend or let me see and comprehend.
Right. And you're right, they got to see it. They have to see it and put it together. But those are the things that we'll enforce with good reading and good reader strategies.
Let me just weigh in as well on that topic. I think it's important for us to realize that, you know, as much as we have become accustomed recently of blaming a lot of things on the pandemic. This process that Ms. Brown was talking about tonight has been in the works for a long time, long before the pandemic. The Virginia Literacy Act started in its initial stages years ago as research was being conducted about the science of reading. This research has been around for a long time and it's culminated in Virginia's response to that. And it's a very healthy body of research that's going to generate some really good things for kids in how kids learn to read and then what we do in response when they don't learn quickly enough. And so this is good stuff. The pandemic kind of slowed that process a bit. But we're excited to get the final report that should be coming out. A lot of this research is actually being done at the University of Virginia. And the curriculum that's going to roll out behind this, from the legislation, the Virginia Literacy Act, the curriculum and the resources that come behind that will be really good stuff for kids. There is some training, Ms. Everett, that our teachers will all be part of as we learn how to teach perhaps differently in the science of reading. But we have great teachers who are ready. And many of our teachers, some of our teachers have already been a part of some of this training in the past. Again, this research for the science of reading is not new. So this is good stuff, not anything to be alarmed about. We're going to roll it out carefully. We're waiting any day now. They're saying it's going to probably be around March before the state actually releases the new literacy curriculum. And it will focus very much on literacy from day one. And the rollout will be comprehensive. It'll include programming that we'll be engaged in. We'll be back talking with you about programs that we're going to buy into that will help with not only the train for our teachers, but also the delivery. Program that already has built-in lessons and modules for kids. So it's an exciting time really to be launching a new literacy program across the state. So it's good stuff.
I remember Pocohesha did a little bit better than the state on their reading.
Yeah, our numbers, you know, what Ms. Brown quoted to you was even some NAEP scores. That's all national stuff. We don't have local numbers associated with NAEP, for example. We didn't engage, it's not a Virginia initiative, pull scores from around and make comparisons. But if you look at our students' performance, even right after the pandemic, our kids did very, very well comparatively. Not that, you know, we rest there, we're always looking to get better. But our kids comparatively to the state did very, very well in all measures, including literacy.
I think that shows the teachers who come in and go before the board. I was here, put them back a little bit early and the dedication they took to virtual learning and dedicated to all these students to keep them ahead. It's a great thing that our teachers did.
I agree.
Good questions, Gus. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And next I will call Ms. Tracy Spence up, our Executive Director of Finance for our financial update, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to give you the financial update for the Pocohesha City Public Schools. As you know, I'm sure you've heard the error that the Virginia Department of Education had in their state count tool. The estimating tool for the local school divisions did not deduct the local grocery tax hold harmless amount. And as a result, the local basic aid funding estimate was overstated. The overstated estimate only occurred when using the count tool provided by VDOE. And this error was discovered January 23rd of this year. The fiscal year '24 estimated reduction for the school system is $156,683, which for the fiscal year '24 proposed budget has been factored in for this reduction. But for fiscal year '23, what happens? The House Bill 1400 does not allocate any additional. The House Bill 1400 does not allocate any additional funding to the school system to cover the local grocery tax hold harmless amount. This is based on its projected sales tax revenue and enrollment. There were 64 school divisions that were designated to receive funding under this House bill. However, that wasn't the case for PCOSAN. Senate Bill 80, sorry, it should be 800, fully funds the division, local grocery tax hold harmless reduction for PCOSAN. Here is, um, a representation of the, the, for our left-hand column shows the PCOSAN's budget at 16.1 million. The House bill, based on the CAC tool, which they assure us is right now, House bill's CAC tool at 16 million and the Senate bill CAC tool at 16.2. You'll see, of course, this is how it is currently and they're all negotiating it now. House bill actually will reduce in fiscal year '23 the allocation at 72 mil, uh, 72,000. And the Senate bill will actually increase it by about 30, 39 rounding up. But that's the effect in '23. Next, just to provide some budget highlights, and of course, after this, we're going into work session, so we'll discuss it a little bit, a little bit in more detail. The state funding outlook. The General Assembly has not yet approved a state budget, but the, uh, the school's fiscal year budget was based on the governor's budget, which was issued in December 2022. There's a net increase of $1,174,553 million in state revenues projected based on the ADM of 2096, which is basically a, a increase of 50. State included funding of 5% salary increase for SOQ-funded positions. The state has recommended a 1% retention bonus for SOQ-recognized instructional and support positions. And the school's budget provides $1,000 per full-time employee and $500 bonuses for part-time employees at a cost of $343,000. Now again, I tried to provide a, a representation based on the CAC tool that's provided right now of what it is for the governors. The state funds are at 15.7 million. At the House bill, what, what they have right now, what they're talking back and forth, what the House would give us is about a $19,000 increase. And if the Senate does what they have right now, it would increase our budget by 343,000. But again, we don't know what's going to happen until whatever shakes out, so. For our fiscal year '24, other items to note, the request for materials, supplies and instructional materials from principals and directors have been honored without increase to the current budget. So everything that they had requested has been honored within the current budget. In the fiscal year '23 budget, uh, the school received 1.5 million of school construction funds and the division has chosen to utilize a portion of these funds for the primary school roof replacement on its fiscal year '24 to '28 capital improvement plan. We just wanted to note that. That was approved in October of last year. Here were the personnel cost increases. As previously noted, there's a 5% compensation increase included for all employees. In addition, there were two K through five teachers and two para-professionals due to projected enrollment increase. Also, there's a coordinator behavior specialist due to projected increase in enrollment with students with special needs. Health insurance premiums, we just met, uh, last week, there's 3% increase, um, which we borne by the schools not passed to the employees. Um, and there's no change in dental premiums due to a two-year rate guarantee that was secured last year. And again, as previously noted, bonuses, there's currently right now in the budget, in the recommended budget, a thousand for full-time employees and 500 for part-time employees. Other primary operating cost increases, New Horizon, New Horizons, there's, uh, an average of right now a 21.9% increase for the New Horizon contract for, and that adds up to $158,882. Utilities is an average of 6% increase. And transportation, there was an increase of $26,342 for garage services.
So the transportation, we did put more budget in.
Yeah, yeah, so. And the recommended budget action, as previously noted, the two K through five teachers and the paras, uh, at the cost of $217,361. And the coordinator behavior specialist is about $113,000. I'm not going to go through all of this, but there's basically a 6.8% change totaling 1.8 million. And again, as you, as you would expect, 73% of the budget is in instruction and we'll go through this during the work session. The revenue impact, we have about 1.2 million projected state funding increase. And again, that's based on the governor's budget. We don't really know how it's going to, kind of flail out. We won't know until the, they're anticipated to adjourn the 25th of this month. And there was a small decrease in federal grants. There's 1.8 million, as previously noted in the prior, um, slide. The bulk of it is in compensation increase of that 5%, um, just in the governor's budget, 894,000, the health insurance of 65,000, bonuses at 342, and the recommended budget action of the teachers, the para and the coordinator behavior specialist. Utilities are at 40 grand, contracts at 37, and of course, the New Horizon of about 159. So when you get up to the projected revenue increase of 1.1 million and the projected expenditure increase of netted at the 1.8, that's the projected deficit is, of course, that would be the city's contribution increase. And then I just wanted to provide the dates, of course, today would be the budget work session and then the approximate date of the General Assembly adjournment. March 21st would be the public hearing on the proposed budget and approval of the proposed budget and then going to the school board, the school board approved budget forwarded to city council on the 31st of next month. And that concludes. Any questions? Sure.
Yeah, I have a question. As far as New Horizons goes, is there a max increase per year or is it a new contract where they can put any amount increase they want on there?
That, that's not actually representing additional costs specifically at New Horizons. It's a slight increase like every school division has had in operational costs to do business, but it's primarily because we have increased enrollment. We pay per child, so it's actually a good problem to have. Um, we've, we've really encouraged those programs. They're great opportunities for kids. We, uh, have had a steady increase and this year, a significant increase in enrollment in those programs, primarily the career and technical education programs that they offer. So it's, the, the lion's share of that increase is because of more enrollment in the program.
Well, it's not for tools, materials and stuff like that, it's strictly?
There's a slight increase, again, um, inflationary increase in everything you're going to see in every budget, including ours. But the majority of that increase, uh, represents additional, again, we, we pay per child.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and next up is operations update with Dr. Ratliff.
Good evening, Madam Chair Hesel, Mr. Tillot and board members. I do have a brief presentation for you tonight for the, for several different of our operational capacities. The first things I wanted to go through is the, the heating and ventilation system at the primary school and the roof at the primary school. After we initially thought we were going in one direction with the, with the HVAC system at the primary school, um, I guess as time went on and the proposal came in, the, what, what we were, we weren't getting a big enough scope of work. It was going to take a couple of different phases in order to get the, um, the, the, I guess, the building replaced to a point that people are really going to feel the need that we need them to. So at that point, we went out and we sought more proposals. Um, and we, the proposal that we got back that we're recommending tonight that you all approved, the superintendent to sign the contract with, actually comes down under the $2.4 million allotment that we received from the city and the combination of the city and the funding that we had from the school division, um, just slightly under, but it comes under that amount. The good thing is, is that is a complete replacement of the entire system at the primary school, um, with the exclusion of the, the kitchen. And in the kitchen, we've got new gas packs back there. We're, we're in good shape. It doesn't need to be changed. Um, the system that they're going to be putting in will be a VRF system. And in the end, we probably will see some energy savings and, um, as well as much needed relief for temperatures for just about everyone in the building. Um, probably a lot more immediate than what they're, they're, um, they usually have. So tonight, we do have a motion for you to approve for the superintendent to sign an agreement with Warment Mechanical so that we can go ahead and get this project underway. One of the good parts that I did not put on the slide is this also comes with a 10-year parts and labor warranty through Warwick. So it's not only going to help in the immediate, but it's going to be a, a lasting, uh, impact as we're going to save in our human capital with our maintenance staff, any service or the yearly service that's done on, on the unit and everything. So we'll, we'll fill that immediately once it's done. We do anticipate it being substantial completion by the time kids get back into school. So next year, when, um, we actually have people there, they should, um, have a good heating and cooling system. The roof, we are still working on the designing phase. We hope within the next month, we can actually get a, uh, an RFP out. Um, once we get that, we will actually begin the process of installing it. Uh, this is a wind vended roof system that we're putting on and the, the good thing about this is it can be done while people are in the buildings and it also comes with a 30-year no-dollar limit warranty. So again, we're saving a lot on not only the, um, the materials and such that should we have any problems, but the human capital and finding where problems may be. Human resources, uh, we have, um, started back again, uh, in a lot more earnest now with recruiting and hiring as the hiring season is upon us for education. Um, we've already started going to job fairs, which really, I, I say we've already started, but any opportunity that's come up, we always attend and we go to. Ms. Purdy will have another social media push coming within the coming month and employee intentions have been submitted after the meeting tonight. We will go ahead and get those positions that we know are going to be vacant posted and principals are encouraged to go ahead and start the hiring process. So hopefully we can be on the front end of the hiring and, um, get more in as quickly as we can get them in, um, as we know that it's been a challenge through, over the last year, couple of years. You also have before you tonight a policy for approval on first reading at 6-5.10. That's the instructional materials with sexually explicit content. That is the policy that we reviewed in the work session this past month and there have been no changes in it since then. Uh, just to give you a couple of reminders, we haven't, we are required by the Department of Education to adopt this policy as a school division, not a policy, rather, not this policy, a policy as a school division. What this policy does is it actually kind of formalizes the practice that we've already been following. Um, essentially, the principals at the schools will, um, identify a process to identify any, uh, materials that fall under this category with the superintendent's approval. Parental notification would have to occur if there were any materials being used that would fall under this area and, um, parents can view the material and request an alternative material to be used within that time period. Uh, this doesn't have any kind of relationship to the family life curriculum. It's a whole kind of separate entity than what you would be talking about regarding that. And tonight, you also have approval for the calendar for the '23, '24 school year. And again, I'll remind you, we talked about this at the work session last month. There are no changes from the, the discussion that we had, uh, from the different versions of calendars that we brought you. Um, as a reminder, the version of the calendar that we brought, that we had, um, is a, has a four-day pre-Labor Day start with students. As a reminder, the, all of your surrounding school divisions are doing that around us this year. This gives us alignment with the regional calendar, calendar committee. We surveyed parents, teachers, students and community members. The school to leadership team made recommendation and then each school's leadership team, the school leadership team took the principal's ticket to their leadership team, they had recommendations. It is a 180-day calendar. Um, we, our practice has been to build in 181 to 182 days, so we have time built in for inclement weather. Uh, because of how some of the days fell, we weren't able to do that this year. Each school has 12 early dismissal, 12 early dismissal days and we do have a full two-week winter break built in within the calendar. And just a couple of things that we have later tonight in the work session, I will be redoing, reviewing some of our school safety protocols and we'll be talking about our, uh, facility capacity due to our, the, the next few years enrollment and what we could potentially be seeing with the new housing developments that are being, are currently being built. That is my update. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm only going to ask this because I've been in the system before. And the intent forms, do they have a rough number of who's not coming back so that we can get on it? We need, it's a shortage. We really need teachers.
So the, if someone says that they're retiring or resigning, we use those intent forms as their formal notice. So essentially, if they've identified that to us through the intent forms, it's going to be on your board action tonight.
So we'll see that?
It's, it should, it's within your packet for tonight.
Okay. And if they say they're leaving with no reason behind it, I guess this is to you. I'm not sure. Do the principals have a little chat with them and find out like, you know, am I doing something that you don't like? Is the school system?
Absolutely. I would say we make every effort to prevent someone from, from separating from us. We, um, have a, a process that, that, that is underway that also includes a survey. I think we shared that with the, with the board in the work session, that, that includes detailed information because we're trying to gather as much information as we can about why people are leaving. Some of them are obvious, transfers, military, moving out of the area, retirements, um, even those folks, we, um, try to prevent, prevent them from leaving if, if we can. So there's a, there's a process in, on multiple levels, formal and informal to, you know, to keep our employees, uh, engaged in PCOSAN.
Is it crossing a line for the school board members to see the intent forms of the ones that say they're going to leave?
Not at all. No, no.
I think I'd like to see that.
We, we, um, we plan to give you, like we talked about in the work session, uh, when we talked about the survey, we plan to give you a full report when we finish this process so you can look at all the information that we have.
I just don't want what happened last year or the year before where everybody, and, you know, I'm going to blame COVID on a little bit of it, but 40-some teachers is a lot to lose in one year. But if we can get a jumpstart now, I mean, I even know that may apply, kind of.
We're, we're actively recruiting and, um, one of the things that, um, we, we mentioned before, we're, um, we're using our electronic means, uh, with some of the work that Ms. Purdy is doing to blast out through social media. We're finding people seek jobs in different ways than they used to.
That's wonderful.
So, uh, we're out there looking at, uh, other sites indeed, other, um, vocation sites as well as our normal traditional ways. And we had suspended, um, before I got here, they'd kind of quit going to, to job fairs. They had found that, that wasn't really producing much in the way of, uh, new hires. So, um, we've tried, we've, we've reinstated that. We're trying everything we know, the old-fashioned way and the new way. Because it's a, it's a crazy time, you know? PCOSAN has been one of those school divisions that, that didn't have to be as aggressive in the recruiting because it's such a wonderful place to live and work, but.
Well, I'm sure they don't come here for the money.
It's not about the money.
Because they dug to teach. So, you know, that's, we're, that's what we're really looking for.
That's right. That's right. And we're, uh, we're, as we'll be talking in the budget session, uh, work session later, we're, um, being as aggressive as we can on the, on the financial side of it, knowing that, that's always difficult. But there is a bill out there that we'll be talking about in the work session that, that's still alive in the Senate that, that has even a larger incre- has even a larger increase for, for salaries than, than in the governor's budget or in the House budget. So I know, you know, folks who follow this may be watching that bill. I'm hopeful that it, it survives. And then we may be coming back to you with another number. But right now, what we built in the budget, as we always do, is the governor's budget, which has a 5% increase. But everything we can do financially and otherwise to recruit teachers, we're going to be aggressive about it.
Thank you.
As far as, as far as that bill, is it unfunded by the state where the city hasn't funded?
Well, it's like always, they fund it through SOQ, Standards of Quality. So that's a portion of our, our staff. It, it actually turns out to be just over 50% of what they fund. So if they say 5%, they're going to fund about a little over 50% of 5% increase for our staff. So the city then has to come back and backfill that difference and have historically worked very hard to do that for us. It's a double-edged sword. You know, we, we don't want to leave money on the table coming from the state when it, when it equates to increased salaries for our, our staff. But at the same time, it creates an increased burden for our city to make up that difference. Because as you pointed out, they only fund a portion of it.
And the city has been very generous.
Very much so. Very much so.
So with the roof, we keep talking about 30-year plans on the roof and HVAC systems. Are we going to look at some point going to three schools instead of funding the four schools that we're doing now and all the extra increase in cost of general services and everything else that could add to it?
The short answer is everything's on the table because the, the reality is we are, for the first time in many years, looking at an increase in, in enrollment in Pecosin schools. We've been flat for some years. We're going to be sharing with you in the work session tonight, the results of the, the analysis that.
Cooper, Weldon Cooper.
Weldon Cooper. I always forget their name. And their state demographic agency has provided for us that, that shows an increase over, over the next three years that is significant. So we're going to have to do something. What that is, is we're going to come to you tonight with multiple options to look at. You all will have some ideas, but doing nothing is not an option. So we have to do something. Is it consolidation, maybe? Is it adding one to another school?
Should we hold off on the vote for the HVAC and roof?
Well.
About $6 million.
Maybe. The problem is, we, it's, we can't do, fail to do nothing now either because we won't have a solution for next school year. And we can't get through without a new HVAC and roof. And that building, the primary school that we're talking about, is not a space that is in such poor repair to tear it down, I don't think. So wherever it ends up and whatever service it provides, whether it's something for the city or something, you know, could be a lot of different options for it if we decide to move in another direction. And of course, that's multiple conversations away. But if that's the case, it's going to need a new roof. It's leaking like a sieve. And it, we've band-aided it every way possible. The good news is, for the first time in many, many years, maybe, I can't find, I can't go back far enough to find the time when the state actually gave capital improvement money to schools. So this year, our share of the capital installment, or the construction installment from the state is just under $1.4 million. So it's a good time to share that with the city and the capital plan and, and replace that roof in addition to the money that already allocated from the city to do the HVAC. So those wheels have already been turning. It's probably wise to go ahead and finish that in that we're going to have an increase in kids next year. But it, but the, the big increase will come in, in the following two years.
And with the calendar, starting four days early to match up with York County and then, are they going to do the two weeks for Christmas? Or are they going, because last time they did not.
It's in the full 10 days. That was one of his bullet points.
So York County's doing two weeks? Because they don't normally do two weeks.
They were, it's interesting what I have seen on the local calendars. And I, I don't know really if any have been published. I think several are going this month and several are going next month. But there, there was a mix in Christmas break, or in winter break in, in how long they were out. I, I'll say.
They went Monday and Tuesday this year. I know they did.
That was because of the New Year's.
So you had a mix with that. And then the other difference that you really would see was where we are, you, you're still utilizing the half-days for, for professional development. A lot of your surrounding places are now going to whole-days. And what that is doing is that's kicking their last day of the school year back to where it would be on a normal start time. So you're starting early and finishing late, whereas we didn't do that. We are backing up four days, but we are, we will end that much earlier as well.
So the kids in the vocational programs, how does that affect them if they go on Wednesday and we have a half-day and someone else has a no-day? Do they get the half-day? Or do they still go to class for the full day to go? Or how does that work for them? Since we're trying to line up.
I don't know that there's any exact rule of thumb of how it has worked. New Horizons follows two of the big three. So they follow between Newport News, York, and Hampton. So whichever the majority of, of the schedule is, is what they follow. They have had a combination of days where they always take our kids, okay? But the, the depth that they may have in class may be varied if, say, our kids are the only ones that are there, or if our kids are missing and you may not have Newport News there, you may not have Hampton. So there, there is not really a great deal of alignment among, from the divisions within the professional development days or the half-days that are going on.
So when we started a week late this year, they took us a week at the end of the year of still in vocational schools. Those kids didn't really miss anything. They just didn't start with the other kids.
Correct. Well, they had the option to go early. And some did and some didn't.
If they didn't go early, then they still stayed in late and still made up those days. They didn't miss any days from it. Okay.
It's funny, when I, when I first got here, someone said to me pretty early on that we have a regional calendar because we share this school called New Horizons. And I said, wow, what a great idea. That's amazing. I can't imagine how you get six school divisions to agree on a calendar. But what, the fact that you've done that is amazing. But I've never seen it. So it was, it was sounding like a great idea, but it's maybe in Fantasy Island or somewhere. But we, our calendars are all over the place on the peninsula, which days certain school systems take off. Holidays are, are not perfectly aligned. Start times, end times, it's really been all over the place since I've been here. We, as you all know, we're the only school division on the peninsula that share New Horizons that started after Labor Day last year. And that may took, that became a real disadvantage for our students. The opposite happened the year before when Williamsburg, Williamsburg, James City, and York were the first school divisions on the peninsula to start prior to Labor Day, disadvantaging those students for that year when the rest of us were kind of following the more traditional calendar. So it, it's kind of gotten away from us now to, to be in, in alignment. And this calendar does get us back, at least for start time, with all the schools that share New Horizons. I have heard from, I think, all of the superintendents in the eastern region, and I'm not hearing from any of the superintendents who believe their board is going to start post-Labor Day. So it may be that the whole eastern region will be in a pre-Labor Day start. What's different for us, as Dr. Ratliff said, is we're starting the four days early and we're ending a week early. Some of the school divisions have start, are starting early, and then they're ending about the same time by adding in work days and other days during the school year. Our groups that we spoke with, school leadership teams and TAC and others, were intimately opposed to that. So we've tried to follow their lead in, in, in the recommendations that they brought to you, then we shared in the work session. It's not a perfect calendar, but I think it does represent most of the interest of, of the students and, and parents and staff in the community.
Any more questions?
So we'll still begin out a week before York County, most likely?
Several negative.
Looking out June 7th, according to the.
I, I don't think York is taking their calendar until their March meeting.
They were the 13th this year. So if it, if they follow what they did last year, we'll be getting out a week early. So there's no Horizons kids go to New Horizons during that last week? Or are they getting out earlier?
They have already wrapped up their curriculum by that point in the year for all of them. The, they, they are going to wrap up a little bit earlier than we are when they get into their licensure exams and their certification tests and such that they take.
Let me just mention this one thing. It, this may clear it up a little bit. There's never been a goal that, that New Horizons functions day for day like any calendar because they're, they're serving six school divisions. So on any given day, one of those school divisions may not have students there. Because that may be, that school division might have that day off. And what they've done has been very flexible with each school division to work with students. If they are closed that day, because again, like Dr. Ratliff said, they follow the two of the big three, that's York, Hampton, Newport News. If one of the, if, if those, they're closed that day because they're following that calendar, then, then our students stay at our school and they provide resources so that they can continue their lessons. But they are very flexible with days. There's just no way that their calendar can be exact with each of the six school divisions unless we all adopted the same calendar.
I thought one of our biggest factors, we're trying to make sure that they can start those programs at the same time. But if they're flexible with that program and they're going to end a week early in that program, it seems like.
Yeah.
One of our biggest factors is not the biggest factor.
Well, we got a lot of feedback last year from the students who attend that program. And again, our numbers are, as you saw in the slide, from the cost are steadily going up in our involvement with New Horizons, which is a good thing. We got a lot of feedback from those students that the fact that New Horizons started a week early and they felt behind, even though we notified them, New Horizons is starting on this day, you should go to school there a week early. You can try that with teenagers. That's not really a successful plan.
And then early, they're happy with it.
And, and, you know, they, they don't mind the end early part. But that was, we got a lot of feedback from those parents that, and those students, that that was quite challenging. So as, as much as they were flexible and they allowed us no penalty starting late, it was a challenge to come in, you know, day five in, in a, in a curriculum with New Horizons.
And if I can add too, I did get a lot of calls. The students that were with New Horizons that started back early, they had class with New Horizons the days that at the Pecosin, we were having our back-to-school open house day. So that was a, not go over well at all.
And what was the parent survey? Was that, was it 55 to 30?
I think there was roughly, I have it here. We were at pre-Labor Day and did not have a preference. Pre-Labor Day was 36%. Do not have a preference is 10%. And post-Labor Day was 54%.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Firth, do we have any public comment tonight? Mr. Ingram, would you walk us through the consent agenda, please?
Sure. A, approval of financial reports. B, authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached requests. C, approval of personnel actions. E, approval of minutes for January's regular meeting and work session. E, approval of superintendent to sign a contract with HVAC vendor for Prim, Pecosin Primary School.
Any questions or additional comments about?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Firth, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Everett?
Aye.
Dr. Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Hessel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is 6-0.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to other matters for consideration. The first one is consideration of approval of proclamation for National School Breakfast Week and Career and Technical Education Month. And I'm going to ask Ms. Everett to read our proclamation for National School Breakfast Week, please.
Okay. Whereas school districts around the nation will celebrate National School Breakfast Week from March 6th to 10th. And whereas studies have shown that access and to nutritious programs such as the National School Lunch Program and the National School Breakfast Program helps, helps to create a strong learning environment for children and helps to improve children's concentration in the classroom. And whereas students who eat a complete breakfast have been shown to make fewer mistakes and work faster in math exercises than those who eat a partial breakfast. And whereas studies show that students who skip breakfast are more likely to have difficulty distinguishing among similar images, show increased errors, and have slower memory recall. And whereas studies show that children who participate in school breakfast programs eat more fruits, drink more milk, and consume less saturated fat than those who do not eat breakfast. And whereas children who fail to eat breakfast, whether in school or at home, are more likely to be overweight than children who eat healthy breakfast on a daily basis. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this day, the 21st of February, 2023, by the School Board of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, that week of March 6th through 10th, 2023, be hereby celebrated as National, National School Breakfast Program Week in all Pecosin City public schools.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Burbage, would you please read the career?
So the proclamation of Career and Technical Education Month for February 23. Whereas economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the nature of today's workplace, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education provides Pecosin students with a career pathway for post-secondary education and workplace readiness in a global economy. And whereas through career and technical education, students gain experience in practical and meaningful applications of basic skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, thereby improving the quality of their education. And whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills that provide them with more career choices, expanded earning potential, and greater job satisfaction. And whereas the cooperative and ever-increasing efforts between career and technical educators, administrators, and representatives of business and industry stimulate the growth of Commonwealth's economy by preparing students for career, for careers in high demand, high wage, and highly technological skilled areas. And whereas the theme, "Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow," demonstrates the crucial role that career and technical education plays in readying our students for successful careers. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this 21st day of February in the year 2023, by the School Board of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, that the month of February 2023 be hereby celebrated as Career and Technical Education Month, all Pecosin City Public Schools.
Thank you. Comments about either of those? Okay, I would.
I make a motion that we consider approval of proclamation for National School Breakfast Week and Career and Technical Education Month.
Thank you. Would anyone? At Ms. Firth? Okay. And Ms., please call the, call the vote.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Dr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Oh, she's not here.
Ms. Everett?
Aye.
Dr. Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Hessel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is 6-0.
Thank you very much. The next one is the consideration of approval of the 2023, 2024 academic calendar. Any additional questions, comments, thoughts?
Yeah. So in the work session last month, we had talked about, you know, free post and, and no preference. And, you know, there's parents and even teachers probably that have made plans, you know, to be, you know, out of the area before the Labor Day. made plans, you know, to be, you know, out of the area before the Labor Day. And we had talked about having, you know, like an Amnesty Day or Amnesty Week or something like that. Is that still a part of this?
Absolutely. We intend to be extremely flexible about that, that first week of schools attendance. We followed the lead from other school divisions and watched what they did as they started a week early. It is going to be an unusual summer where we start early and end early, and then that compacts this summer by a week. So we are going to be very flexible with families, especially ones that already have arranged for vacation and other things during, during that week in August.
Now, the teachers have to start a week earlier or two. Are they ready? I've seen most of them took surveys to make sure.
This, we, we provided you all the information in the work session that you all considered when you discussed this. And all of those things are in, absolutely. We, we will certainly work with staff as we need to. But if we're going to do that and start early, you know, it's got to start somewhere. And so that's, that's the, the vote before you tonight.
Comments? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to approve the 2023-24 Academic Calendar.
Second the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Firth, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Nay.
Ms. Everett?
Aye.
Dr. Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Hessel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is 5-1.
Thank you. The next one is the consideration of approval for the adoption of Policy 6-5.10, Instructional Materials with Sexually Explicit Content. I think we talked about that earlier.
Yeah, we, we covered this in the work session, as you recall in the last meeting as well. This is a requirement from VDOE based on legislation that, that each school have a, a policy that covers any material that may be deemed sexually explicit. Our policy, of course, is designed by our attorneys and meets the letter of that law, but also is, is very parent-friendly, which is what we wanted, so that parents are the ones who would make decisions about the exposure that their children would have to, to such content. It's very rare, I'll say, in Pecoson. It's not something that we have had concerns about. Generally speaking, we don't have any curriculum that, other than the family life, which is designed to discuss that, and of course, that we already have a policy in place that you all are well aware of, that, that allows parents to opt their children out of that part of the curriculum. But it's a pretty basic policy that we're recommending you approve tonight on first reading.
Just a question. What triggers like ARF, right? I mean, like, is there like a governing body?
Yeah, it, it, it requires, our policy requires, and this is what we're, we're finding around the state, is most of the responses to this requirement from VDOE is that it's, it's creating a panel or some group within the school that would vet those materials and say, you know, this, we, we're approving this. But then it goes out to parents to approve for their child. So if, a good example, like you said, an R-rated movie. We don't show many movies, but if it is a, some part of the content would be R-rated, that would be an obvious piece that would be shared with families. This is what is being presented. Do you want your child to have an alternate assignment? So it would be handled on an individual basis. And of course, it will run through my office. The policy requires that it be approved by, by, by my office as well, so that we don't have things out there that we're not aware of that would have any indication of a sexual content. And the other point of clarifying is it's only instructional material. So it would only, that would include something that's being used for instruction. A library book, for example, is by choice. A, a student might check out a library book. That would not be, fall under this policy.
Comments? Questions? Okay. Like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, the consideration of approval for the adoption of Policy 6-5.10, Instructional Materials with Sexually Explicit Content.
Ms. Firth, would you please call for the vote?
Wait, discussion?
Oh. Are there additional discussion?
Yeah. So, all right. The, all itself, 22 dot 1 dash 16 dot 8 doesn't specifically list anything about library books being considered, you know, material when used. And, you know, if you go back to the actual definition that the state gave, says any picture, photograph, drawing, any. So basically, when a child checks out a library book, we're violating our own policy at that point. Because we're not, you know, we're, we're, we're not advising that parent that, hey, this book has that type of material in.
The, the policy is very specific. It, it has in there very specific language that separates instructional materials and even gives examples of what that would, what would be a definition of instructional materials versus a, 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 a piece of material that a student might check out in a library.
Not only that, Jonathan, I spent 17 years in the library. And those books are already vetted before they get to us. We use order from the Junior Library Guild. And they are vetted before they get to us, so that we don't have to read every book that comes in. And if one does slip by us, we always welcome to parents to come in and let us know.
Discussion? Firth, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Everett?
Aye.
Dr. Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Hessel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Vote is 6-0.
Thank you very much. The next thing is, we're going to move on to communications, other matters by school board and/or superintendent. And before I pass it over, I am going to let Mr. Eden.
Yeah, I have a couple of things, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to say that this is National Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And, did you know that?
No.
So, we're just so thankful to have April here with us. She's new to this position, but she's doing an incredible job already. So happy National School Board Clerk's Week.
Thank you.
As well, it's National School Board Members Appreciation Month. How come you only get a week and they get a whole month? But I, first I want to welcome our newest member to the Pecoson School Board, Dr. Burbage. And Chris has been an active member of, of our community for some time. He's been involved in attended school board meetings and workshops. He also works a local agency and has a, a student with us in the primary school. So we're excited about his role. He represents the Western Precinct. And tonight's his first meeting, so welcome, Chris, to the, the school board. And in honor of National School Board Appreciation Month, April has ordered some very delicious cookies, I'm told, and that, that say thank you here. So it's a very small token of our appreciation for your work. Being a school board member can be a thankless job. You hear all the complaints and, you know, you get addressed in the supermarket and everywhere you go, phone calls and emails. And I will say, I've worked, this is my 32nd year in this business, and I've worked with lots of school boards over the years. And this school board is it, an incredible group of people. In spite of their differences and opinions, they have one thing absolutely in common, and I've noticed that since I've been in Pecoson, and that's to serve the best interests of children. We never have a conversation in this board, whether it's in a workshop, a closed session, or in this open meeting, where the, the forefront, in the forefront of every decision is not what's in the best interests of children. So I appreciate you all very much. I appreciate you on a personal and professional level. You guys are amazing. So happy school board's appreciation month.
Thank you.
And a couple of other quick things. I've been asked by Jean Ray, who takes care of our Impact Aid work. Impact Aid, I'm just going to say this quickly, is a way that school divisions that have a significant military presence, that are connected to military families, can access some federal money to help us do that work. We've sent out a survey every year, Impact Aid Survey, and you all have seen it and familiar with it. We are, in crunching our numbers recently, we found out that we're about 17 people short from accessing a, a pretty large chunk of money. We are not going to do anything but, but exactly right. So this is a shameless plug. If you have not filled out your Impact Aid information, and you have some connection to a military base or federal government property in the area, you work on that property at any point during the year. You don't have to be military. You are military-connected by that. And that helps us access money. So again, a shameless plug, if that's you. We are going to continue to send out messages in this regard. But I know it's another thing you have to fill out, and, and that can be a pain. But we very much appreciate it. The money goes directly to help children in this community. And, and some of the services we do, military-connected night, and welcome back, and a lot of the other things. This will help us continue to do those things. So if you're one of those folks that haven't taken the time to do the Impact Aid, please contact the school and we can guide you through how to do that. And one more thing, I want to thank tonight, Ms. Janet Brown. Janet is in the audience tonight. Janet worked with, as the Director of Finance for Pecoson Schools 14 years ago, wasn't it?
14.
14 years ago. And was here for several years, retired. And then when Tara left us to go down the hall to the city, we immediately started recruiting for, and advertising for a new executive director. But we asked Janet if she would come and help us in the interim, and she was glad to do so. She's continued to help other school divisions since her retirement stay afloat. And we very much appreciate you, Janet, for filling in. And I know Tracy appreciates your, your help getting started. And you all make a great team. Maybe we need two finance directors or something. But thank you so much for, for your help with the school division.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Lexi. All right. As routine, I'm going to start with the primary school. At PPS this month, we have welcomed teacher cadets from PHS, celebrated our school counselor. We've had the second grade senior social night, Valentine's Day, and the 100th Day of School. In the coming weeks, we've had even, we have even more to celebrate with both in-school and after-school activities. Our first graders will have an in-school field trip from the Jamestown Outreach Program, and our PTO is sponsoring their second family bingo night. We are also preparing for our spring book fair and Read Across America Weeks. We will have dress-up days to susubrate, so we hope everyone will get their outfits planned and ready. Next Thursday, March 2nd, will be our Real Men Read Event in the school and our Spring Book Fair Family Night that evening. We thank, we thank all of our parents for their volunteer hours, reading to our children, and providing treats for our staff as we hope to, and we hope to make many more and take the opportunity to volunteer for upcoming events. Now, PES. Students have worked to complete the Student Growth Assessments, SGAs. The data from these tests will help highlight areas and strengths, and areas of strength and areas of needs for students as we approach the SOL testing spring. Students participated in Battle of the Books competition. One team will represent PES at the Regional Battle of the Books competition on March 8th and, March 18th in Williamsburg. We kicked off our 13th Annual Cookie Dough Fundraiser, and students are excited to sell cookie dough to raise money for our school. Wavy TV 10 meteorologist Jeremy Wheeler came by for a visit. He talked about extreme weather types and what it's like to be a meteorologist, and even brought some cool weather tools to share with the students. Fifth grade classes are, will be going to the Virginia Air and Space Museum this week. And fifth grade students have also started working on their research projects. Now for PMS. February has been a busy month at Pecoson Middle School. The All-In Bowl Teak Store officially opened and was a huge success. All PMS students were able to select prizes based on the number of Golden Bowl tickets they have earned by demonstrating our school-wide expectations of being respectful, acting responsibly, and building resilience. The school store will be open again on Thursday, March 2nd. Students in grades 6, 7, and 8 took year and mid-year student growth assessment for math, and we are now gearing up to administer the writing SOL test for all 8th grade students, March 8th and 17th. PMS celebrated National Kindness Week from February 13th through 17th, Spirit Days themes, dress-up attire, and kindness challenges. PMS students were encouraged to give each other friendly high-fives, mix it up at lunch by sitting at a different lunch table, and perform acts of kindness for others, as well as compliment classmates for, as the kindness is a team effort. Battle of Classes was also back in full force last week. Students participated in themed days, competed in minute-to-win ga-, minute-to-win at games at Lund, had coin wars, and ultimately battled it out in the gym on Thursday evening. Sportsmanship among the teams was fantastic as they performed in front of a packed gym full of family members, students, and staff. Congratulations to the 8th grade in winning the coveted trophy. A huge thank you is extended to the staff and PTO for the assistance with this outstanding event. We are also currently busy planning for this year, for the next year. PMS school counselors are hosting parent information nights this Thursday evening, are in the process of visiting classrooms to review registration information from the student perspective. Please visit our website for more information. Finally, PMS would like to extend congratulations to our 22 students who are inducted into the National Junior Honor Society and our February Golden Bowl Students of the Month: Peyton Schmid for 6th grade, Emily Weiss for 7th, and Finley Ramos for 8th. Last but not least, High School. Second semester has started, and PHS is in full swing with projects, activities, events, and field trips. Our biology students in Ms. Yarbo's class and culinary students in Ms. Duval's class continue their projects of growing food and preparing it. Forensic students started learning how to measure splatter by finding the degree of the original source today outside. Mrs. Easter's class has been working hard to prepare smoothies for the staff and ensuring our recycling is collected each week. February is CTE Month, and our CTE teachers are working with their classes to create videos and pictures that capture all the great things our CTE courses have to offer. Our band students have continued to impress with 11 students being selected for all district band assessment, and one student, Senior Patrick Nelson, making the all-state auditions. Our chorus students have also done well this month with four students earning all-state, as you guys heard earlier, Avery Nunley-Brooks, Zana Weems, Bagill Smith, and Lauren Romanelli. Our winter sports seasons are wrapping up, and our students have done an exceptional job. Our wrestling team won the regional championship and recently fourth overall at states, with freshman Jared Goodson won the 130, 113-pound title. Our swim team also found postseason success as our boys varsity team earning the regional championship, and other real A teams and individual advancing onto the states. Tony DeVries, Soren Lund, Lynn Owens, and Jack Sebring all placed second in the state championship in their events. 14 of our indoor track athletes earned all-region honors and will be, be competing at the state event on March 1st and 2nd at Liberty University. Our girls' basketball team will be in action tonight, hosting the regional game versus Greenville. They earned the first round, first round by and are overall third seed in the region. Our scholastical team also won the region 2A championship, and they will be competing at the state championship on February 25th at Jamestown High School. Our drama students just competed the first-ever student-directed play this past week and performed for a parent-family audience. The student director was Senior Ashton Hendrickson. Our, our spring sport tryouts are currently underway. And last but not least, a special shout-out to all of our counselors, Dr. Cunningham, Ms. Banton, and Ms. Neenan, who have done a tremendous job supporting our students, and also the School Resource Officer, Officer Biggs, for keeping our school safe and supporting our students and staff. As always, please subscribe and read the latest Island Times newsletter for all things occurring at PHS. Thank you, Lexi. Mr. Ingram?
Yeah, I want to congratulate Ms. Wymer for being the High School Senior of the Month. Congratulate all the members of the PHS All-State Choir. And just want to thank all the teachers and staff for everything that, that you do. You know, there were some, not so good numbers tonight, but, you know, everything that you've done up until now is, is, we, we've surpassed the national average. So, I mean, that, that should say a lot right there. Thank you.
Dr. Goodell?
Also wanted to congratulate the All-State Choir. Also give kudos to the faculty and the students involved with the Given Guard. The Given Guard, that's a great project. When, you know, a biologist here loves to see that science education in action and seeing it applied in real life. So waiting for my kids to get up there and be a part of that project themselves. So waiting for my kids to get up there and be a part of that project themselves. And then one other final shout-out to Jared Goodson. He's one of the first kids I've met when I moved to PCOsen five, six years ago. Hard worker, been on road trips with his dag, chasing national competition in wrestling. And it's just good to see all the work and hard work put off, give reward. First of, hopefully, many state wrestling titles. Such a good kid.
Thank you. Mr. Childress?
I'd like to go along with everything they say, and it is really cool to see students actively excited about learning when they're growing and pulling stuff and cooking it. So it's awesome programs. And to see Eagle Scout help build the stuff just makes it much better, so.
Other than that, I'm good.
Everett?
Of course, I want to thank all the teachers and their administration. Your jobs are really hard. I'm sitting on this side right now, and I see that they're even harder than I thought they were. It's nice to see Ms. Brown. She was, she had a little bit to do with hiring way back in the day. And all of the students that were mentioned tonight, we just have excellent students, and that's what we want to keep. And Mr. Tillit, I have people calling me this week about you saying that you're walking through the schools and entering their classrooms, and they love that. They love to show you what they're doing. So I'm giving, give you kudos for that. And that's about it.
Wanted to thank or congratulate Evelyn Wymer, being the February Student of the Month. I'd also like to congratulate the All-State Chorus Group. And also, you know, shout-out to Paige Yarborough at Givengarden. I think that's a great opportunity and...
Just joking.
That's it, sorry.
All right. And I'll just say, welcome to the board. Look forward to working with you. And the only comment I will add is I think I finally now got my hearing back from Battle of the Classes, because my watch, my phone, everything kept on alerting me that it was too loud. So, but seriously, it was great to, it's great to see our kids get back to normal, to see them go on field trips, to see them do things like this. So thank you again, as Ms. Everett said. Thank you for all of our staff for everything you do. We appreciate it. With that, Ms. Firth, do we have any material for board review?
Amin.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and adjourn, and we have a work session and a closed meeting that we're going to get to, but thank you all for coming.